Good evening. It is now 6:30 and I will call to order the February 22, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, welcome. Thank you for your time this evening. Staff, thank you very much. Our first item on our agenda this evening is the adoption of the posted agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes to tonight's agenda? None from Commissioners? Staff?
No changes.
None from staff? I would stand for a motion.
Removed.
Moved by Commissioner Benke?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our February 8, 2016 Planning Commission. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes from the February 8 meeting? None from... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
One of the past meetings, Commissioner Benke moved... rose to correct the spelling of my name, and so I would like to correct the spelling of Commissioner Benke's name under adoption of Agenda 1. First word.
Very good.
Okay. Any other changes? Staff, changes to the posted agenda or the minutes?
No.
With that, I would stand for a motion.
I'll move to Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, and the minutes are approved. The third item this evening is a public hearing. It's an application for Kramer Mining Materials, or KMM, for a planned unit development amendment to address the final mining boundary and edge treatments for the quarry located at 1020 Cliff Road. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Dean. Thank you for your time. You have the floor.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. Tonight, we do have a public hearing for KMM. It's a PUD amendment to address the final mining boundary and edge treatments for the quarry located at 1020 Cliff Road West. The site location is west of I-35W, north of Cliff Road, just east of the waste management landfill, and south of the Minnesota River, as well as a piece owned by McGowan, an existing freeway landfill. The site, as I mentioned, is a planning development. Current zoning on the property is I-2. It's within the Gateway area as well. A portion of the property is within the Gateway zoning district. Aerial photo gives an overview of the current mining conditions today. And what this plan shows is an approved 1994 plan, which shows the mining boundary and the potential uses surrounding the mining area once the mine is done or completed the quarry operation. On the eastern side, abutting I-35W, is envisioned to be mixed-use development in the future. And the 94 plan showed open space opportunity on the western edge, as well as potential for commercial and industrial-type land uses. It's kind of difficult to see, especially with white on white arrow, but this dark line around the edge shows the edge of the mining area, and there's a shaded area which shows edge treatments. The area in the middle would be a future lake. The plan before you today, the current PUD proposal, shows, and I'll go through this in detail, there's a lot of colors going on here and a lot of flags of information. This blue boundary area shows the approximately 500 acres... sorry, 500 acres of land owned by KMM. The area, and it's not shown here, but approximately 340 acres is approved as part of their planned unit development right now. That's what they're entitled to mine today. That area is approximately from this point here, drawn with my arrow, west, to approximately this red line indicated here. As part of this PUD amendment, KMM is asking to essentially move that line or move that mining area to the west, still maintaining 340 acres. And that area would be identified by this green line, and I'll just kind of highlight it with my arrow, which would, again, be approximately 340 acres. As part of the proposal, and I'm going to move on to the... a couple of slides just to give you a brief overview. The green portion on the west part of the exhibit shows potential schematic edge treatments. So I'm going to move over to this slide. Schematic edge treatments show the property line, that western property line, potential future right-of-way of 40 feet, an additional edge treatment with landscaping, a potential walkway down to the mining, what would be the mining boundary today. So I'm going to flip over to the slide here. So that represents this green area here. Future right-of-way, and then the edge treatments, conceptual, which would be the walkway and the planting area. So the next slide represents the edge treatment along the south boundary of the mined area. Again, showing schematic edge treatment detail in concept, 190 feet. And that corresponds with this yellow area, again, on the south. As part of KMM's proposal, they did not provide edge treatments for the eastern edge located here. And so that's one thing that the city would like to see as part of a future PUD amendment. It's also indicated that there is future potential park area in the upper right corner or the northeast corner of the property. Initially, as you may recall from this plan here, open space was initially planned to be on the western part of the property. And again, that's moved now in this proposal to the eastern side with potential for a public beach at some point, and we're currently working with KMM, and we'll continue to work with them on final designs as if this does move forward. Since we don't have detailed information about the edge treatments, about the defined park area, about future land uses for the eastern portion of the property, the city staff is asking for additional time to work with KMM to provide that information. So as part of the recommendation, we're asking that KMM, once they come up to 300 feet from this western property line, at that point, they should come in and provide more finalized, detailed plans, which may include, at that point, a final plat. It may include final park design, final edge treatment and restoration items such as that. Staff is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Again, that the meander line or that decision line, once they hit that 300 feet from that western property line, that they provide additional detailed information. KMM does commit to providing parkland and working with the city on that specific acreage or that specific number, and that will be determined at some point in the future, that exact amount. The future PUD amendment should also provide, again, more detailed information. And I'm not going to go into... I'm not going to read the entire slide unless you want me to, Chair.
No, it's fine.
Okay. So basically, we're asking for end concept plans that show that detailed information, where the trees are located, where ground cover is located, where that trail will be, and we want to make sure that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which we will be evaluating in the very near future.
Ms. Dean, just to clarify, we're simply asking for that at the trigger point of the 300 feet?
That's correct. That's correct.
Can you... excuse me, can you draw on that schematic about where the 300 feet is? I'm not clear on that one.
So it's... it would be about, and this is kind of rough estimate.
Okay.
You can see the arrow right here, approximately in that location.
Thank you.
Another recommendation that the city is asking for is to continue to work with KMM and, in the future, the DNR and the Natural Resource Research Institute to develop the base of the future lake so that it creates a habitat for fish and wildlife. We want to make sure that we have adequate information so that the bottom of the lake also provides uses that are agreeable to a future park or a future beach as well. And so those are part of the recommendations as well. We're also asking that the trail is shown around the perimeter of the lake. Of course, once we get more detailed information, things can be adjusted. Again, we hope to continue to work with KMM as we get to that 300-foot decision line. There is an additional condition regarding groundwater. This is in the groundwater overlay, and we'll continue to work with KMM should any issues arise from EAW. And then, we're asking that all conditions from any previously approved CUP or PUD still remains full force and effect like any other development. At that point, if Planning Commission has any questions for myself, Dave Edmonds is in the audience representing KMM. He is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I appreciate your presentation this evening. I do have a quick question before we move to the Commission, and maybe I'll pick on Brian. And it's Pat... oh, no, he didn't know I was going to bring him into the conversation. At the end of the engineering considerations, it's right above police-fire building code considerations, there's a line that says, "There will be new sanitary sewer and water main construction constructed within the development." And that seemed... was that... is that true? Is that... or what's... I didn't... that was kind of out of the blue from a standpoint is with what we're dealing with and what... is that part of the other development, or it was just kind of an odd line that I thought was there?
I can answer that.
I think Brian's going to say that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Because I haven't been to a meeting in a while, I made a table. There is a no.
Okay, no, that's what I thought.
No, I forgot the word no.
That's what I thought it was going to be, but I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, which is very typical with a project like this. You know, we don't know how fast mining is going to occur, and there's obviously an ultimate reclamation plan, but until we get further into that mining and when things progress to a point where they're ready for a final reclamation, that's when utilities as development occurred would be laid out.
Okay, that's what I thought.
No utilities at this point.
That's what I thought.
I apologize for that.
I scared you. I caught that, didn't I, Brian? Okay. Commissioners, what questions at this point do you have from Ms. Dean? Commissioner Levy?
The lake. I'm stuck with Michigan in the back of my mind and water issues. The lake is going to be filling a quarry. What in the presentation and the recommendations or in the discussion, where is water quality dealt with?
I... go ahead.
There is an existing EAW that provides detailed information about the drinking water and drinking source. If anything does arise to the attention, that's something that we would evaluate and continue to work with.
And that's so much worried about drinking water as swimming water?
And that's something that would be...
In the same area?
If it's either swimmable or something where, you know, people are fishing, lakes are tested, you know, whether it's the DNR control or another entity controls the lake in the future, that's something that would be expected, like monitoring is something that it's a standard that occurs.
Quite honestly, Commissioner Levy, that's... the water quality and the maintenance is way above our pay grade. There's a fair amount of government agencies that are going to be involved in the water quality, and so that wouldn't be... but I appreciate the question, but that would be not something that we would deal with. We would deal with some stormwater runoff and a few things like that.
And, Mr. Chair, if I can just add that, as a part of this proposal, the edge treatments that are shown, those are specifically for that treatment of runoff. A large buffer system with a shallow water area, not going directly into the deeper lake. Typically, mining lakes such as this are some of the cleanest bodies of waters around, so I don't think there'll be any fear. But as Regina said and the Chair said, that typically DNR will monitor that, so.
Commissioner Benke?
Is the quarries going to continue to be used for surface water intake for the cities?
Yes. This lower area, yes.
I mean, even once we get past and when we're done with reclamation?
Yes. I'm saying yes, so.
Right.
She has a lot of background on the project, so. Thank you, Ted.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Levy?
One more. Do you have an approximation of the perimeter of the lake? Got an idea of acreage, but irregular shapes, about three miles around, two miles around? Any guesses?
I don't think I have an exact exhibit. I believe it would be pretty close to what's shown here, highlighted on the... highlighted on the exhibit ultimately. So ballpark, 300 acres.
Okay.
Give or take. I don't know, maybe.
We can...
If Dave has a better estimate.
When we have the applicant come up, we can. Any other... Commissioner Benke?
Just, Dean, like, just a few things, and obviously I brought some of these up previously tonight. We talk about the park, and... let me back up. Let me start with first one. In their engineering considerations, and this might go to Brian, was the 40-foot right-of-way, was that something that's new or that is something that has always existed? Because it appears to affect the 220-foot setback, reducing it to 180.
Yeah. Chair Benke, or Mr. Benke, both rightaways were a conceptual part of the original plan. Again, coming down to the end use, there's obviously, especially on the north piece of property with the access that will go to 35W, there's another property in consideration there. So the idea is that there will be a right-of-way along the north side as well as the west side. Those ideas have been in place from the beginning. The main purpose of bringing that up in today's PUD amendment is, again, kind of a reminder as we move toward that final reclamation to, you know, to remember that doesn't get forgotten, because it is a very important piece that we acquired that right-of-way for road access. But it has been a part of conversations from the start, from the original PUD.
So we're happy with the 180 of actual setback from the future right-of-way?
That is correct.
And is that 40-foot right-of-way a full right-of-way or half right-of-way?
That's a half right-of-way.
Okay, so we will have an 80-foot right-of-way all the way through?
Correct.
The other 40 feet has already been dedicated within the Burnsville sanitary landfill plat, so yeah, this would be the rest of it at that time.
Wouldn't there be an 80-foot right-of-way along the Dyke Road then instead of the 40? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Never mind. Under recommendations on the park, is there any discussion of discrepancy between what they're currently talking about for parkland and what we're looking for?
So the current estimate that the city has, it's based off of a formula in our city code. It's based off of the number of units anticipated, or residential units, and the amount of industrial, commercial land anticipated as well. And the city came up with the range 11 to 15 acres of parkland, and that's a range based off of our best guesstimate of what the future potential for the mixed-use area will be. Those numbers will likely change as we have more detailed information in the future.
Sure. Okay, so my next question was, what would the... what would today... what would the park dedication be under today's requirements? And that's actually what we're looking at.
Right, and that's a ballpark based off of our assumptions of future land use.
Right. And then, you know, I guess my concern also had been shape of the lake, and I guess I looked back to the original Gateway design work, and it really doesn't vary too much from that. And I guess, you know, I have the benefit of being on Sunset Pond, and I know how that trail is loved by everybody that uses it, and it meanders nicely. It has a lot of the same kinds of existing features that this is trying to get to, it sounds like. And I was just concerned a little bit about how rectilinear some of these edges are now compared to something that had more of a curvilinear shape and felt a little more natural. So I guess, is this relatively hard edge defined in this? Is that literally what we can expect to see the edge of the lake to be?
I don't think so. You know, in the future, we're anticipating those detailed plans, which will definitely not be as rigid as the plan you see here in Plan B.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? This does require a public hearing. I'm sorry, we can have the applicant come up and maybe they can tell us about the actual size of the lake, Commissioner Levy's question. So if I could have the applicant come up and please give us your name and your address for the record.
My name's Dave Edmonds. I'm the Executive Vice President of Kramer Mining Materials. My address at work is 1020 West Cliff Road. I reside in Lakeville at 10200 199th Street West.
Thank you, Ms. I appreciate your time this evening.
No problem.
Commissioner Levy, your question about the lake?
Roughly the perimeter of the lake. I mean, this is going to be a bike path around it, or is it going to be a small walk path around it?
We envision that, you know, through discussions with staff, that there'll be a pathway around the perimeter of the lake. The types of uses, obviously, would likely be walkers and bicyclists and things like that. You know, I think of Lake Calhoun or Lake Harriet when I think of this path.
And that size of lake?
The lake will be between 310 and 340 acres.
Okay, that's a number I don't usually think of.
Lake Harriet's in the same range. It's about the same size as Lake Harriet.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
I'd be shooting from the hip if I tried to tell you the perimeter, but I could certainly shoot that in an email.
That's fine. You're giving a comparison. I don't make Harriet, and so that answered the question very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Upper Prior Lake is 300 acres, so that's the south end of Prior Lake, south of town.
Okay.
Roughly.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant this evening? None. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
This does require a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to step up and speak to this issue to please come to the podium and give us your thoughts. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other final questions? Commissioner Benke?
I would just like to say that, obviously, everything that happens down here going forward moves us toward the marquee development is a plus, and I think clearly that the public facilities that they're providing as part of this work, I think, is also a plus. And if they are able to start developing the east side quicker, I think it's clearly a benefit to all.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. I agree. I like the edge treatment that they've presented. From the... that's a difficult transition over there next to the landfill, and the opportunity to get a little more development closer to 35, and then put... to me, it makes more sense to have the park where they've proposed it closer to the people that are going to use it. Commissioner Singh, you have your hand up.
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think, first of all, I would like to commend KMM for work with staff in trying to get this thing worked out. What I see here, I agree with all the plans they have here. A lot of the future plans are all conceptualized. They're still not really worked out, and that's where I would like to see later on, as progress is being made, that we can come to a conclusion of this. This is wonderful. This will be a great asset for the city of Burnsville when everything is completed. It will attract a lot of people, and I think for livability issues, it will be a great addition to our community, making it a better place to live. And so I support the project as it is and look forward to the continuation when final plans are being made for the park and the beach, et cetera. What I would like to commend KMM representatives for working so diligently with staff to come to this point as we move on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. At this point, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Thomas, were you... were you going to make a motion or did you have a comment?
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. You have the floor.
Okay. I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council approval of the application by Kramer Mining and Materials for the planned unit development amendment to define the final edge decision line and schematic edge treatments for the quarry located at 1020 Cliff Road West, subject to the five conditions in staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I have... we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. We appreciate your time this evening. Have a good evening. The fourth item on our agenda this evening is continued public hearing for the city of Burnsville ordinance amending Title 10, zoning chapter 7, 8, 12, 12B, 20, 22A, 22A1, 22B, 22C, 24, 26, 26A, 26B, and 28 of the Burnsville city code to update and add provisions for solar energy systems.
You're supposed to try to do that in one breath.
I know. And our presenter this evening is Ms. Gueros, and Brian has abandoned us. We did not keep his attention.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Ms. Gueros, we have a public... a continued public hearing this evening, and I think we have some changes that have been presented to you that I think we may go through in some fashion in certain areas, and then we probably may have some other things I guess we'll have to bring back to the Commission if I understand correctly.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Gueros, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. The... this ordinance has been reviewed by the Planning Commission in various states a number of times. The last time was in January, and there was some direction provided for changes to the ordinance, try to make it more streamlined, easier to read, easier to understand, talk about some... actually sectioning out the ordinance so we know what the requirements are for each type of installation, for example, and some other minor changes. So the draft that is before you has attempted to incorporate all of the suggestions provided at the last meeting, and this is a continuation of that public hearing, and we are asking for feedback from the Planning Commission on the current draft, and that changes... if you'd like to see future changes, that those are specifically identified so we can make sure that we get those incorporated, so that we can either have our recommendation to forward this to City Council with approval subject to changes, or if you want to have the item come back and be continued... the item come back and be continued again, to give us again, more specific, the recommendation, the better off we'll be incorporating those changes for you. And with that, I can open, open the hearing.
Ms. Garros, I, the, I appreciate your presentation in front of us this evening. I think you did a great job of kind of restructuring all the tremendous amount of effort and work that's been in here. I liked the, how it was kind of reworded this time. Thank you very much. And I, also, if I'm correct, I think everything in front of you, there's nothing new here except a couple of small changes that the Planning Commission had requested previously. Some of it had to do with some impervious surfaces. So, Commissioner Benke, I know you have a fair amount of questions, so I think I'm going to start, if you don't mind, with everybody else, and then I'll come back to you. Commissioners, what questions do you have for Ms. Garros about the ordinance as it's been presented? No one.
I'd just like to say that it's readable.
We accomplished that.
They made it readable, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Levy. Any other questions? Nothing? Okay. Commissioner Benke, why don't we go to your concerns?
Thank you, Chair. Deb, I concur. I mean, the readability of this is, is great. Maybe that's why I was able to come up with some questions. And really, what I did was, I looked at it from like three different directions here. I think I do this too much, but I looked at it as, as a designer. If I was bringing something into the city and you were going to see it, I've got to look at it as a designer. I'm trying to look at it as what you're going to face when somebody brings something in. And I'm also trying to look at it from what works right for the city of Burnsville. And I guess the cleanest way I can think of, a number, a number of my comments will cascade into, into things that'll go away farther down on my list. The first item that I think that I was curious about here came from Commissioner Thomas, and it was the horizontal equivalent surface area. And to me, I had a question about that. And is that, is that the, the shape of the device projected straight down on the ground? Is it the, is it the, the device laid flat on the ground and it's half of that? And that, to me, was a question, because to me, if I was designing it, I wouldn't know where my square footage limit might come from, from that. So I wasn't sure if, if we had the ability to add a definition for that in the definitions of the ordinance. And if we did, what it would be.
I would leave it up to, to Commissioner Thomas. The way that I read this is that whatever the horizontal surface is, 50% of that, it was before 100%,
Sure.
So that 50% of that would be utilized in the calculation. If there's a better way to define it, we certainly.
So you'd take the whole device and lay it flat and take half of that?
We'd look at how it's, what's proposed, yes.
So add it slow.
Yes.
So it's the installed position?
Well, my intent was one or the other. I think the 50% is the accepted impervious by the PCA. And that's fine. I mean, that's what you started with, and I think that, that, that's, that's a fine option. The other option I discussed is the horizontal equivalent, which would be exactly as you said, the impervious surface projected down.
So you take the device as it's installed, projected straight down, and half of that is your, no, that, oh, okay.
The horizontal equivalent period.
Okay, so she's actually got both of them in here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, what I've learned since then, I mean, all over the country, I mean, water quality rules are EPA mandated, so the standard is 50%. And I think, despite the fact that I suggested another way of saying it, I think the 50% would be the appropriate way.
Okay, so, so we're going to illuminate the language of the horizontal equivalent surface? Or what is the 50% of? I think it still comes back to my same question.
50% of the, of the surface.
So, so you look at it in plan, look at it straight down, and whatever area it's covering, you take half of that, and that's your impervious?
No, you take 50% of the panel area.
So that, it's the, the device itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I think then the language would be modified to be a little more specific that way.
Yeah, you're right. It'd be 50% of the panel surface. I think that would be the appropriate way to say it. And I, and I would suggest, Deb, maybe, I don't know if you have some resources, but that, that's what people tell me.
Well, quite honestly, it makes sense, because at our latitude, and even just looking at it that way, most of these items are at about 45 degrees, which leaves you about half of the area exposed and half not exposed. So that makes sense. If I could move on then? Okay. Under item six, I have, I have issue with the term flush mounted. And I know, in talking to Deb, that this really came from the model ordinance.
Yes.
And the confusion to me is that it talks about flush mounting, but there's other elements here that seem to imply surface mounting. Now, to distinguish them, flush to me, the surface of the device would be flush with whatever surface it's attached to, a roof, a wall. So it would be basically integrated into the building. But if it's flush and it's mounted on the face, to me, that would be surface mounting, and it would actually be in addition to, and outside the building shell. And I, I think that that's confusing enough for me as a designer that I wouldn't quite know how to apply some of this. And also, I think that there's a couple areas down below where it could actually affect, it could affect decisions about approval. For example, if it's on a wall and that device is now considered part of the structure, and it's surface mounted, and now that wall is too close to the setback, you know, it could create some problems where somebody might actually, you know, violate a setback and stuff like that. So, you know, I, I do think that there's an opportunity here to maybe address both flush mount and surface mount, or figure out which one belongs where.
Where in the ordinance is this you're referring to?
Well, right now, under number six, in her, in her, in the, in her review, it's there.
Review, okay.
Right. And then if you, if I go to the ordinance, for example, well, under definite, under definitions, roof-mounted solar system. Wait, no, that's not a good place to do it. Let's go up to the, up to flush-mounted solar system, the definition. A wall or roof-mounted system mounted directly abutting a wall or roof. Okay, so if the system is abutting the wall or roof, to me, that's a surface mount, because it's not, because the face of the unit is not flush with the face of the wall or the roof. And in my business, that is what flush would mean. So the fact that it's abutting the wall, it's on the wall, to me, would imply surface mount.
Flush is the wall.
Flush would be the wall, and surface would be on, on the wall or on the roof.
Yeah.
And that distinction, though, could, like I say, that wall might get six inches thicker because the device is that thick, and it moves it toward the street or a sidewalk line, and all of a sudden, you have a, a not complying structure. So I, I could see that creating a problem for staff, which could also create problems for applicants.
So, so if I, could I try to maybe put this in perspective? Per number six, the definition of flush-mounted, in my opinion, I think staff was trying to get at, it wasn't mounted two feet off the building.
Agreed.
That they're trying to get that it's attached to the building, and the nuance we're talking about is the difference between being attached to the building and being literally recessed or flushed in, into the building.
Right.
Correct? I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing.
I agree. And I'm, I'm thinking that we might actually, and I, again, I know this is coming from the model language, I just can't quite buy that it's correct to my way of thinking. We have building-integrated solar energy systems, which appears to discuss systems where you are replacing traditional roofing materials or windows, skylights, awnings, and presumably siding, because it says other building envelope systems. To me, that is a flush system. The system is designed to be integrated into the structure and be flush. So to me, the flush-mounted solar energy system should really be a surface-mounted, or it should distinguish itself to address items that are mounted to the surface of the, of the roof or the wall.
Commissioner Benke, what, what, if it says surface-mounted, what do we, I mean, then we get into the nuance of what if they want to have it a foot away from the building?
Correct. Yeah, but that's, but that's not allowed under other elements of the code, though.
That's correct.
So, I mean, that, that is covered already under the code, the existing language.
So your suggestion for number six is what?
I think the title is incorrect. I think that flush-mounted solar energy system needs to have a different title. That, that would address it being, it's still abutted. I mean, it's abutting. I don't know if that, if we can use that term. That's used frequently in, in our code. I don't know if surface-mounted instead of flush-mounted is, is a, is a better word. You know, I could get my thesaurus out, I think, and we could look for other, other terms that might mean this as well. I, I just, you know, a wall or roof-mounted system mounted directly abutting but on the wall or roof. But then flush mount needs to be something else, I think.
Ms. Garros, do you, I guess we're looking for a little direction. Do you want to, more direction than changing from flush to?
I think if that's the consensus of the commission.
Surface-mounted.
Yeah, we can certainly, yes, we can do that, yes.
As I see, as I see this, where it's written, it's not flush-mounted, it's surface-mounted.
Based on, based on what I've talked about with what I know about it?
Yeah, we're just looking at it. It's, it's mounted on the wall.
Okay.
Abutting the wall. That's not, that's, flush-mounted is, my iPad screen is flush with the perimeter. That's flush-mounted.
Sure.
Integrated system?
Okay, integrated.
Integrated into the wall.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I know that I had a couple of notes to you at Deb about, you know, some issues of physics and, and thermodynamics and things. I, I don't know that we want to get into really discussing those here, I think.
Buy your time then, now.
I think it's pretty clear.
I took thermodynamics in school.
I know. Well, that's two of us. You want to have, want to have a conversation between us both?
No.
Good, okay. I don't either.
Commissioners, let's stay focused.
There we go, that's right.
I will totally cater to your expertise. Because I'm not.
Let's look at, what's our third item you'd like to have addressed?
Yeah, I'm going down the list here, because I want to skip those. Under solar energy device, passive solar energy systems shall be clearly designed as a solar energy device and not merely as a part, as a normal part, a part of a normal structure such as a window. Yet, a significant amount of passive solar design is windows and mass walls and mass floors and the, you know, some of the things that Commissioner Levy brought up even before the meeting, where this is, now, true, a lot of these are, are older design schemes, you know, I mean, but the techniques are still valid. And, you know, I, I guess the worry, the concern I have is which of these actually matter? Because which of them fall under building-integrated solar systems?
We're trying to, I think what the, what we're trying to define here is, because we're trying to regulate solar energy devices, those things that we're mounting on buildings and whatnot. We're trying to say that if it's building-integrated, and what building-integrated means, then you're basically exempt from, you don't have to deal with the screening and those types of things because it's building-integrated. So that's the, those are the parameters that we're trying to accomplish. And, and just, you know, how we do that, if there's some changes in wording that would make it more clear.
Right, and I think that's what I'm trying to find out here. Not merely part of a normal structure says, says as a window. So does that mean that we're not going to look at a window as a passive solar device? I mean, is that what that's trying to say, or?
No, I think what we're saying here is that we're regulating solar energy devices. So if you're putting in a, a window,
Okay.
Then, you know, that's not what this ordinance is intended to regulate. It's intended to regulate other systems.
Okay, and we probably don't want to refer to it back to the building-integrated solar energy system definition and have a loop there. We want to be able to
Distinguish.
Distinguish it.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I understand it now, but I still didn't understand it the first time I read it. And I'm wondering then if, if that gives a, a new reader a problem when they come in to try and figure out what we'll allow and what we won't.
If I may, excuse me. A solar energy device, to me, it sounds like something that, even though it may be designed into the building initially, the building could be there without it, and it wouldn't affect the building. So it's, although it may be integral with the initial design, the design of the building does not rely on the solar collection device, energy device.
I see what you're saying.
Which might clarify some things. You know, a window, it's going to be, can have a window, you're going to have a window.
We're just trying to stay away from any, any regulation based around a passive solar. I mean, it's part of the building, it's not covered in this ordinance.
Maybe I'm making more of it, I mean, the hard part now is, I read it now and I understand it.
It's the lights?
Well, it's, yeah. Sorry to get somewhere, but, you know, um, uh, you know, when I, when I first, when it first came up, you know, I really saw it as a, as, I saw it as conflicting with the whole passive solar. Passive solar energy system shall be clearly designed, oh, I'm sorry, there's my, there's my issue. Passive solar energy system shall be designed as a solar energy device. But passive solar is typically integrated into the building. So I'm, are we, are we looking at active solar systems instead of passive solar systems?
The intent was to, again, distinguish something that would be regulated versus something that
That's not.
we don't want to regulate.
Then I think that passive needs to be active, personally. An active solar system is one that is a, is a PV panel, it's a hot water panel, it's a hot air panel with fans that moves the air from the panel into the house. Those are active systems. A passive system is windows that basically are introducing the, the infrared into the house, allowing it to be converted, and heating the structure by heating the things in the structure.
Okay.
So other than a window, what would be considered a passive device in this scenario?
Well, typically passive solar is windows and a mass inside the house. There's two buildings down on Scenic Lane in South Burnsville. Both of them have walls of glass. One of them's are sheltered, one of them's not. They were documented thoroughly back in the late 70s, early 80s as, as, you know, great design from that standpoint. And they're, it's basically a wall of windows.
And that, we don't want to regulate or put all these regulations on.
It's built integrated. It's integrated into the building, it's part of the architecture, it's part of the design.
So that's passive.
That's passive.
If I want to decide the entire side of my house with solar panels, then we're having a completely different discussion.
That's, those would typically be an active panel, and that's what we're talking about, wanting to regulate to a point.
Commissioner Benke, how about to your, to this last sentence, to your point about passive? If we changed it to active solar energy system shall clearly be designed as a solar energy device and not merely a passive solar system, part of a normal structure such as a window?
Right. The first word needs to be active, not passive, and I think we need to address the passive elsewhere in the sentence.
As passive, it's being
Correct.
It's not being covered in the, in the ordinance. Does that make sense?
That takes, that's perfect.
So there are anticipating new materials, new building materials, that you could build a wall out of, not glass, not a window, but that would be highly absorbent of infrared radiation, that would then heat that whole wall and become part of this, that's still passive.
They have solar shingles right now, where you can replace the shingles on your roof with photo, with PV shingles. That is flush, because it replaces the existing shingles.
But that's active.
But that's, yeah, and, but it's, but it's also, and I guess that would, that would be an example, does that fall under one that needs to be reviewed by, by staff? Well
That would be, that would be a building integrated.
Building integrated.
Yeah, building integrated. We discussed that.
So that would be reviewed by staff and says, okay, that falls into the building integrated, it goes to building permit, and it goes ahead. We don't see it.
But I, but here we've got, that's a change in energy from solar to electrical.
Correct.
I'm thinking of something that, I'm, I thought carbon composite, for example. Carbon, it's going to get hot.
Right.
And that energy's going to go through the wall and heat the inside. And that energy's going to go through the wall and heat the inside. It's not changing form as such.
Well, it's being, it has to be moved though.
Well, just by conduction through the, through the wall material. I'm thinking, now is that, is.
That's passive again.
That, okay, that's what I'm trying to get at. That is a passive system.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And there again, where, is it passive that's integrated into the building or is it passive that, well, if it's, if it's not attached to the building, it really can't be passive.
Right.
You have to move the heat from where it is to where it belongs.
I'm thinking of the wall of a building is that way, so passive.
Yeah, windows and walls are passive.
Right, okay.
That, that's our third point we've changed.
I'm glad you're keeping track.
I am. Where are you going next?
Wall mounted systems, again, it's the flush or surface mount. I'm just, you know, I'm going to just breeze over the ones that we've really already done. Impervious surface, we did that. Power transmission lines, number eight, under general provisions. I just, it seems to be, everything has to be underground and I think we, does that address the fact that a panel is going to need to have some connections from the panel to a point where it can go underground? I mean, is that covered somewhere then?
Well, I mean, what we're talking about and what the other elements of the zoning ordinance have is that, basically, when you've got electrical lines and things, those need to be placed underground. So if we're, you know, it's the same thing as putting a, for a cellular antenna.
Right.
You know, we like to have those incorporated within the tower, but obviously there is a little section of it that needs to come out that's going to attach, you know, to the, to the actual antenna.
Right.
But yeah, we're talking about the main, you know, we just don't want overhead lines for electricity.
Correct, and that's what the goal is. And I mean, are we looking at it tightly enough to want it all finished where they come out of the panels and they're enclosed in conduit? I mean, are we talking about it to that detail or are we just expecting that there's going to be some quality of craftsmanship when these are installed?
Well, the code, the, the building code would require that, that it's in conduit, no different than power coming to the house.
True. And we are talking electric here, but if it's plumbing, if it's hot water, a hot water system, now you've got multiple water lines insulated, I mean.
And we do have some provisions in here that do address that too, that when you have like a roof mounted system, the, you know, some of the devices and things can, can be located, I mean, we understand that.
Right, okay. And now that's something that the, that staff has the ability to review and it's, okay, I mean, that's fine.
Back to the conduit though, if it's a low voltage, it could be high current, low voltage, does that require a conduit code?
I, I'm not going to get into electrical.
Yeah, we're not going to.
Change every five minutes.
Once again, that's above our pay grade.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we have to leave that to the electrical inspector, the city has on staff.
Okay.
Under exemptions, under number three, accessory SES not visible from ground level view from adjacent right of way or from abutting properties are exempt from, from positions H1, 2, 5, and 6 below, provided the view is obstructed by existing buildings, fences, walls, or topography. That limits somebody from, from adding an obstruction? Or are those obstructions covered under aesthetics that they should be added?
These are existing conditions.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that if you have, I think getting to Commissioner Singh's point, you know, if it's something that can't be seen, and that's got to be, it's got to be based on, you know, something that's specified in the ordinance. We can't do tree cover because over time people can remove trees, they don't need permits, you know, that type of thing. So what we do, and that is partially taken too from the, we've got provisions for street level view of like roof mounted materials and things, looking at if it's, if it's visible at a specified point and they need to, you know, provide you the documentation to that. So that's really what that is trying to get at. If you have existing buildings, et cetera, that, that screen it, then, then you can go ahead and do it.
Okay, so if, if you don't have the obstructions, then you have to look down into the aesthetics and provide them.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, that makes.
Commissioner Levy.
You've got a building that's giving you the shielding that you're looking for and the owner of that building eventually redevelops that area and the building goes away. Am I responsible for shielding my solar panel now when I already put it up and it was, everything was okay? Or is the guy who takes the building down and exposing it responsible?
It's an existing condition.
And we could add that it is, that those have to be done by buildings, fences, et cetera, on the property, you know, on the same property.
I think Commissioner Levy's point, if, if, if an adjacent property, oh wait, because this is.
Like a tree. The tree goes away.
I'm sorry.
He's taking down the adjacent property.
Well, but I think, doesn't this, Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ordinance requires those screenings to be on the property, so it, so the adjacent property doesn't apply?
Right.
Well, I thought, didn't I read here about abutting properties?
View.
View from.
The view.
An abutting property.
Okay. Not visible from ground level view from.
The view is obstructed by existing buildings, fences, walls, or topography.
So the existing building is implied to be on the property.
Ah, okay, so I've got the building and I'm putting up solar thing, it's, it's my, okay, that's clear now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Under.
So just to keep up, I think we haven't, we're still, we've made three changes, right? That wasn't a change?
Yeah, that wasn't a change.
Okay.
Under aesthetics, again, under number three, how would a building integrated SES being allowed regardless of visibility, provided the building component in which the system is integrated meets all required setbacks, land use, and performance standards for the district? How does that address if there is solar glare from that? Which is the next?
I think solar glare is, solar glare is, is glare from that that's causing.
Right.
Problems. And then what we're trying to do again is for those systems that meet the setbacks, et cetera, their, the O's are the ones that you can do. What we're trying to do is to make sure that glare is actually a nuisance. So if you're creating a nuisance, that needs to be rectified. So that is specifically in there, so you can't have a situation where you're creating that glare. But also, we're trying to say that you need to also provide for meeting the setbacks, have the land use that's appropriate for the site, et cetera.
Okay, and the structure of this is that number three, even though you're allowed regardless of visibility, et cetera, et cetera, you're still required to meet number four?
Yes.
And avoid solar glare or mitigate it as you need?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, the practicality of that seems.
Commissioner Levy, you have a question?
The practical, we've got from about 60 degrees in the summer to 22 degrees in the winter with the sun angle.
Right.
And from morning to evening, the glare is going to move across some areas in the winter, in different areas in the summer. That leaves a pretty wide swath that has to be protected. Is it practical? And I have to leave that to the, to the design.
Correct.
I don't know.
I have, looking across Sunset Pond, there's three days in the spring, three days in the fall where I get glare off of the old Eagle Valley. Do we want them to have to mitigate for that?
Okay.
I would say no, that it's a seasonal thing and it's temporary. If you guys agree with me, that's fine, but go ahead.
I think there's, I think that the ordinance is fine. I mean, there's surface treatments on those panels.
Yes, different types of treatments that can help.
I mean, even though they move and the sun moves.
Yeah.
They want to absorb those rays.
Right, they don't want to reflect them.
Yeah, you're right. Anything that's, anything that's being reflected is, is lost energy.
Okay, next, next topic.
Great. In, under, under building mounted energy systems, number three in the actual ordinance, roof mounted, under, roof mounted SES money devices shall comply with all building setbacks of the underlying zoning district and shall not extend beyond the exterior perimeter of the building. And the question I wrote there was, what about the porch? I mean, what are we using to define the exterior, exterior perimeter of the building?
A footprint.
So it would be an entire footprint and any, any attached porches and things are included?
Included, yep.
Okay, and that would be normal in our review of the plans?
Yes, yep.
Okay, number three, it says solar panels will be located in a manner that does not change the roof line or obscure the relationship of a roof to character defining features such as dormers or chimneys. Does this allow somebody to alter their roof line to provide better exposure, to, to provide better exposure?
Yeah, I think you could do that. That would be something that.
But that does change the roof line.
I think what we're talking about is not, basically you have a roof line, you have a roof line that's established.
Right.
If you want to come in and modify that and the roof line changes to this, that's fine. We're talking about not adding, you know, panels or structures that change that roof line.
Right.
As opposed to.
And I think, I think some of the pictures that you showed us with some pretty bad examples are really what you were after there.
Yes.
But I think that the language that we have now where it needs to be flush or surface mounted.
Takes care of that.
Really takes care of that, but I don't see a problem with it. You know, I think in part of it too is, by talking about it, I think we're trying to show the, you know, the city that we're thinking about it, but we're also trying to show where our rationale behind the rules is coming from.
Yes.
So that somebody could come back and look at this and understand what we were thinking if it comes up. Okay, SES may only be attached to the side or peak of a roof that is clearly visible from public right of way when such system could not otherwise be located on the sides or the peaks that are not clearly visible. Wouldn't the side or the peak be talking about the gable end, which technically would be the wall? So wouldn't it be a wall installation in that situation?
I think.
Or am I reading that wrong again?
No, I think this is actually, you know, I kind of teetered on whether to include this or not. I think what this is kind of getting at is sort of the situation when you sent me that example from, was it the West Coast?
Oh, yeah.
With the, one of the items that, that Commissioner Benke had found was an article where someone had installed, I think it was in a historic district or some district with, you know, design guidelines, had installed roof mounted solar energy systems. And there was a fight between the, I believe it like the historic preservation people and the city as to what was allowed and not. This particular provision, I, you know, on one hand, I don't know why you would put it anyplace. I mean, you're going to put these panels or these systems where you get the best solar, yes, resource. So I don't know that that's necessarily even something that, that's required.
I do remember that photo that you're talking about. And the interesting thing was is it was an installation that pretty much matched exactly what we're after.
Yeah.
But yet, the city approved it and the heritage preservation said no.
So for this, are you, are you okay with it staying or would you like point four removed?
I think Deb is suggesting that we.
Remove it? Okay.
Yeah.
Under number six, and again, I'm trying to read it detail, systems shall not be attached to the front of parapet walls or any extension of a front wall of a building that is visible from public right of way. Wouldn't this be a wall mount situation and parapets are typically vertical, not sloped or flat?
Let me see, I think this was from a Minneapolis example.
What is a parapet, excuse me?
It's the roof extent, it's the wall extension above that hides the roof behind it.
On a flat roof, the exterior wall goes up higher than the roof and it typically hides.
Commercial buildings, got it.
Commercial buildings are typically with them.
Commissioner Thomas, you have a question?
Well, we're specifically talking about roof mounted systems, right?
Yes.
So would it be, I think within that context, this works, within a roof mounted system?
And I believe that was what the, what the situation was, it was a, you know, you had on the roof a partial parapet, like in a multi-story apartment building. And it, so it's not mounting it on that, you want it mounted on the roof as opposed to the front face of the parapet wall.
Well, I mean, is the goal then to teach, to tell them how to structure, to structure the support or is the goal not to have the panel extend over and cover and be visible in front of the parapet?
On a rooftop, our whole idea is that they screen it.
Right.
So, yeah, this was a situation that was all, you say it's a little bit different. It's not a, you know, the parapets, I think that we think of traditionally are on the outside walls.
Right.
And those provide the screening. I think what this situation was is you had, you know, those parapets, but then there was another like penthouse or something and they mounted it on the front of that. And because it was above the main roof line.
Okay.
So that's what this is designed not to have.
Okay, so we're really saying that a roof mount system needs to be completely a roof mounted and it can't be a combination of roof and wall?
Yeah.
Or it could be a combination of wall if it is totally screened from, if it meets the wall standard?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to look at each.
Yes.
You're going to look at each type of installation separately under the ordinance?
Yes.
Got it. No change. Under roof mounted, I think we're back to the flush mounted parallel.
Okay.
And, you know, if it's flush mounted, it can't be higher than 12 inches above the roof because it's not, you know, anyway, that's just, yeah. Under wall mounted energy, this is where I flagged the setbacks thing, and I think that this goes back to the flush and surface again, I don't think we need to get into that, and that is the end.
Okay, so to clarify, we have a small word change to, as we're looking at the provisions, provision number four, we have a change to number four. And provision number six, we have a word change from flush to surface. And then we have under, under the descriptions, under solar energy device, we made two small changes to the last sentence where we're going to have active solar energy systems shall clearly be designed as a solar energy device and not merely as part of a passive structure such as a window. And then number, the fourth change is a deletion of point number four of 3A under roof mounted systems. Does that, does that jive with your notes, Ms. Garros?
And that included the change to the impervious surface, that that's just 50%.
Oh, did I miss that one?
Yeah, that was the.
I missed that one.
That was the first one.
I stand corrected.
We'll go with the 50%?
Yes.
Just read it up.
Oh, yeah, that was the first one.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I, I misspoke, but that was the change to the, the panel versus horizontal equivalent. I misspoke on that first one.
And I misspoke also. I skipped over one.
We're going to go back.
Back in definitions, it was under building integrated, and again, this language might have come from the model, building integrated solar energy system, a term for the design and integration of photovoltaic technology into the building envelope. And I thought that was very limiting. I realize that there are other solar techniques described somewhat in the balance, in the balance of the text, but I'm wondering if photovoltaic should not be in there and it should say solar energy technology or something like that instead? Just because that seems very limiting. It's, to me, it suggests that the only building integrated solar energy systems that fall under building integrated and are totally approved are PV.
And it should be expanded, all right?
So that, that was it, sorry.
Number five. Ms. Garros, your direction going forward?
It's really to the pleasure of the commission. If you would like to see us incorporate these changes, then we would be looking for a condition to continue this to the next planning commission meeting, which I believe is in.
You believe these changes are large enough that we can't have you send it to the council?
It's really up to the commissioners to the extent, so that would be one thing. If you want to see it again, we could do that. I believe that, you know, through the discussion, that we've got a good idea of what changes you need. In that case, you could recommend that the changes discussed be incorporated and, yep, recommend that to council.
Commissioner Singh.
That's what, exactly what I was going to get at, Mrs. Chair. There, I mean, there are few changes that have been made, but the, I don't think that would take long. Staff can advise when they can get those done. If they want, we can, she can just email it to us and each one of us give her consent to go ahead. And then we can, if, if that's the agreement, then we can make a recommendation today with the changes.
Have we gone down that path in the past, Ms. Garros? I think we've just gone down the path where we, we'd like you to make these changes.
You'd have to come together as a, as a commission. We'd have to come back to the meeting if you want to see, you know, the changes, or you could recommend the ordinance for approval subject to the items.
Commissioners, I would be in favor of us, of, we still have a public hearing to handle, but I would be in favor of us allowing staff to make these changes as noted, and we would possibly entertain a motion to move it to the city council.
What we have to be clear about is, the changes that we are, we are just recommending, if they are significant for the public, to get back to the public, then we'll have to move a continuation and get the public response to it. If it is not that significant, then we can go ahead, as you were saying.
That was my question, Ms. Garros. Do you believe the changes that we've made this evening constitute significant?
I don't believe so, I think it's, it's more clearly, be more clear in the ordinance in a couple of, couple of sections.
Commissioner Singh?
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as I have the consensus.
Right, and I was, yeah, I was going to offer something, but I'll defer. I've offered a lot.
We, any other comments? I know I need to, I need to finish the public hearing, don't let me forget that. This is a public hearing and at this point, we will, it is an open public hearing and I would invite anyone in the audience to come up and speak to the ordinance as presented or to the changes that we've discussed this evening. Once again, seeing no one to discuss.
I don't think we should close again, personally.
Okay, if we're going to move it to the city council, I'll have to close the public.
Exactly, but were there other?
My process would need to be, she believed it, Ms. Garros believed it wasn't significant, and I do believe I had consensus that we could take it to city council.
It's a two-part thing, if Ms. Garros recommends it's not significant, commissioners agree with that.
Right.
And so to clarify, Ms. Garros does believe that it's, there are not significant changes, and I do believe, I think, from my understanding, we have a consensus from the commission.
We're just making it easier to read.
Yeah, so at this point, I would close the public hearing. And Commissioner Benke, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion.
I think this would be your motion to make.
I appreciate that, I will. Wow, give me one line. Mr. Chair, I would recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance with the changes we noted this evening and Ms. Garros's words, nothing to finish it.
The five noted changes.
Correct.
We have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much for all your work, I appreciate that. Ms. Garros, thank you for all of your hard work. I think we're, we're ahead of the curve, I think, in most cases of the city with this, and we owe that to you and staff, so I greatly appreciate all your time. And commissioners, really, I, I do appreciate everyone's efforts in to put together what I hope to believe to be a good ordinance change, so. The final item on our agenda this evening is updates. Commissioners, do you have any updates?
None from us.
None from the commissioners? Staff, do you have any updates?
The only thing that we have, Mr. Chair, is the tentative agenda for the next planning commission meeting. Pass this out, it just has a public hearing related to the single-family zoning district, and we'll get into it in a little bit more detail, but it relates to modifying some of the conditional uses, more to the effect of the types of uses that are currently allowed by conditional use that are basically multifamily or higher density than your standard single-family home. So we have some direction based on some information from our city attorney to make those modifications. So that's primarily what that one will be. We also had, but it didn't make it on this draft, but also a discussion for the 50% perimeter landscape matter to delve into that.
And that's on our work plan for this year.
Bring you some research, correct, that's for our first quarter.
Chandler's right, so we can add that.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Garros.
Thank you.
At this point, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Levy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, I would like to thank everybody watching from home for tuning in, and I appreciate everyone's effort this evening, have a safe drive home, thank you.
Thank you.